Please, please, because you are using the root of law and everything, let me play with you. Please, what we are doing here is a very serious problem. And I want to plead for you to listen and take what we are saying. It is important to listen and take what we are saying. So that tomorrow you can say, this people came to a church before God and told you a lie or tell you the truth. Let me start by recognizing, thank us religious leaders. Our fathers and saints, with all due respects. But they are good that are always calling. And I want to honor it that came here with us. Despite the number of them, leaders that came here with us are standing in all existent groups. For me, I believe that the religion I can be is to answer a question. From the two leaders of the church, because they are all post question. What they said with the prayer and what they do, are all questions. Well, the comment of two of you is actually the problem of Nigeria. I was asking to ask somebody just two days ago. And I said Nigeria as a country has failed. And he said, well, some people did this, some people did that. I said, no, there's a measure of development. There's a globally certain measure of development. One of those few top now, you measure all of them. And what is the global measure of development? The global measure, the most important measure of development is Human Development Index. These three things, one of these, sorry, these have three things you can use to measure it. Actually, I measure by health, literacy, education, and pulling people out of poverty. So that's all. Nigeria has seven, three of them. Number one, a large experience which is hurt. Why the global average about seventy-three years? Nigeria's largest wet ice is about fifty-five. So we're almost twenty years below the average. So we failed. Number two is education. We are one sixty-eight over one seventy-three, human capital development. So we have failed. And number three is the capital, which is pulling people out of poverty. Nigeria is poverty capital of the world. Nigeria have abundance as three billion people living in multi-dimensional poverty. But to tell you why, and I have this is we have more people living in poverty than India. India is one point four billion people. And we are two hundred million. They will say, I tell you how much this. We have more people living in poverty than India and China combined. These two countries combined is two point eight billion people. And we are two hundred, or we are more people living in poverty in both of them. Even they are Nike and the problem they have, we are the highest. And when we talk about this poverty, it's more in the north. More than Nigeria. We have the highest youth unemployment globally today. And it's more in the north. We have the highest out of school children today. And it's more in the north. In health, which you're talking, we've just surpassed India in infant mortality. And it's worse in the north. I can go on and on. We have the highest youth drug prevalence. I use some drugs. Why the global average is five point eight percent, we are at three point eight percent. We have a crisis. And that's all we need to deal with. And that crisis is not a crisis where anybody will say people in South Africa are washed off. Everywhere is a gas, no place is ever negative. Nobody says, anyone. Not the bishop, not the pastor, not a man, no longer, not professionals. Everybody is upset because they are, they are consuming everybody. And that's all we're trying to solve. So for me, when you talked about issue of tribe, religion and everything. And I say to people, their nation should not be about tribe. No tribe buys bread cheaper in Nigeria. Everybody is hungry. No religion buys bread cheaper. If the chief of mass opens his mouth today and starts selling food cheaper, I assure you, people will go for your church and buy the bread or the food and come back to your church. So if there's a run, anybody starve and save you, if you pass by only Christians, Muslims will pass there. If there's a job, you're going to give people jobs. All this of Muslims, Christians will come and take it and go back and sell their ocean. So we have a crisis. Why is this practice that doesn't run to Nigeria? It is creating a effect of leadership failure over the years. The one leader who have refused and not say someone, but another one. But our leaders have refused to ride above expectation. They refuse to do the right thing. They refuse to address the wrong direction. So I listen to what you say. When you talk about security, which the man has said. Without security, you cannot do any other. It's number one. That is why we say, we will secure and invite Nigeria. You think you think and those who are making us insecure and not possible, they would have the government. They're not. However, they know that there's no leadership. And they take advantage of it too. We need leadership to deal with this issue of security. And I've said to the daddy and I, who not shy away, you live from the front, who the commander is. We cannot share the state, we not state actors. We start to go to United Nigeria. When I met daddy, I'm happy that he told you here, he didn't come looking for this job. I weren't looking for him. And I told him, and I said, daddy, I have an ambition. An ambition is that ten years from the day we start, we know how we will come after us. Nobody, no Nigerian will ever say again. And from the east, west or south, but I'm in Nigeria. Today, people are talking about where they come from. If security is the north, is it because someone from Southeast president? We didn't cost it. You can't travel today from Abuja to Karuna by road, by rail or by air. Is it because an Igbo man is president? So why are we talking about where the president is going to come from? The killing in South Africa, is it by Igbo man? The killing in the southeast, is it by Netherlands? The killing in the southwest, is it by another man? So what are we talking? We have a problem, and we need to deal with our problem. Our problem is no driver. It is people that are using the gas. And I said it is because we have, we have found that we need to restructure the entire security government structure to make it work. I have governed the state for eight years. And luckily for me, as governor of that state, all the police commissioners I work with, about six of them are from the north. My ABC is on camera. Everyone knows my situation. We cannot share this table, anybody. It's either we are charged or the criminals are in charge. One person helps or they're charged. And I told these entrepreneurs, you must help me to secure your community. And they did. Go to Alhambra State and see how I work with it, poverty and everything. And that's what we want to do, to secure it. We have come and said, we united. And that you are learning to order with. It is even wider to order in office is transaction. Progress. I have no need to make money again. God has given me enough. I was chairman, I was chairman of a bank in Nigeria, Fidelity Bank of Nigeria. The day I became chairman, I was up there at nine and they asked me a question. You entered into a mysterious far-fetched world, and they didn't trust me. I told them I have no entitlement. Everything I have, I leave it in my house. Greed must happen limited, so. Most of the people, she might not need. I'm not the richest person, but I have enough of what I need. All Muslims who need, they don't need it. They just want to live a simple. Although I was chairman of Security and Education Commission in Nigeria. And I was asked whether, the day I went to sit there, they told you what is my entitlements are. And I told them, I'm not entitled to anything. I don't want anything from you. The present governor of Batiste, the present governor of Batiste, gave me a land in Namibia. He said, you can ask him. He asked me three months ago, and I'm the only one who have been there, and I'm not doing anything. I said, I told you, I do not need the land in Namibia. I don't want house all over the place. I'm not a native of who do it. As long as I don't confuse my interests, they can do it. But I want to reduce my headache. I'm sixty like you, something, I'm not going to hospital. I'm not sick, I want to reduce my, what I have is a north. And people of Alhambra State have been South Alhambra State for eight years. I did not pay golden money. The day I left office, it is on record. And I say it in the church, if anybody can't get it, that's come running. I did not owe salary. Twenty-seven, I did not owe pension. I did not owe gratitude. The ones that didn't owe before I came, and the five billion that I paid it off. I did not owe any contractor or supplier, the day I left office. And I left in three banks in Nigeria, which my brother had mentioned. I left in Access Bank of Nigeria for Alhambra State, fifty million dollars over ten billion. Vitality Bank of Nigeria, fifty million dollars over ten billion. And that one bank of Nigeria, sixty million dollars over ten billion. My speaker came to me, the law, which is passed. And said I'm entitled to a house in Oka, a house in Abuja. And all that salary reservation, which is deep paid to all my colleagues, various guys and everything, and I said to him, but I said, I can't yet to serve by God's grace. I cannot abuse of God's grace. Those who steal public money are abusing God's grace. Because it is great that they have came. To steal it, to take public money is abuse of God's grace. And it should be. Since I left Alhambra State, Alhambra State have not bought me a bottle of water. You can go and check, because I said to them, all the things I leave in my house are hard. I'm not looking for it. And when I got thirty, the reason why I said, this long story. When I got thirty, I said, you don't need anything in your life, God have blessed you. God blessed two of us, said Nigeria. And I don't want to, we want to work for this country. There's nothing again we need. He said, educated, he has a strong background. His parents have studied everything about you, anything just good for you. I went to study his background. I believe his name is correct, his school is correct, everywhere is. Same background. Because if you say, we'll be based on character. Character is very important. We want to stop trusting those who are lying there. Chinese say they have a technique for you, that's the western stuff. I want to verify that. As you know, today, I am the most good African. And I said to everybody, go. If I say I'm an almunus of Brussels, come and give me my number. If I say I'm an almunus of Cambridge, come and give me my number. If I say I'm an almunus of Kebab or Kebab, I'll give you my number. And I cannot be the most prestigious shows. And the fans still in public market. It will hurt me internationally, globally, everywhere. Some people don't have background, they can afford to do whatever. If still, I can't afford to do it, it will affect me for the rest of my life. The problem of Nigeria is very simple. We do not have committed leader to our competence. People who are committed, who have profession. Your country is not doing a lot. That's why we emphasize that we are mostly, you're talking about creating jobs. You can't create a job. It's pretty poverty, because they're not doing anything. To create a job, you need to move this country from per summation to production. You're not professional. You're not professional. Your country is zero, zero in production. All we do here is share it. Anyone who shares it is actually being stolen. So all this sharing is stealing. No country survives like that. Not one country. The third poorest state in Nigeria is in the north. Actually, nine is in the north, one is in the south. And I thought then, um, where in the same the biggest assets of Nigeria today, physical assets, is not oil. Oil is the least. The biggest asset of Nigeria is in the north, and the north is the forest, which is the land. It is the land that is the biggest asset. We can make more money from land than it is the north. Five times you will make the oil. And we abandoned it. And you talk about fertilizer. I will not give you fertilizer, I will provide the land where they're not. What is fertilizer? Now, I don't want to give enough fertilizer, I want to pull the children of north out of poverty. Because what I want to do is about them are finished. The north will actually say, they are actually missing the president that they're waiting for. Why do you tell them for this? I went to Nigeria State, Nigeria State is a first state. It's a bigger state, followed by Borneo and Africa. Nigeria State is seventy-six point three thousand square kilometers of land. Nigeria State is most southern land, all of the most southern land in Africa. It's already the worst. They are everything, including the land. Nigeria State can't be shared. Over seventy governor in Nigeria State are under control of mandates. No school, no and they're there. And we go to the mandates, they tell you, they are doing what they are doing because they have no job. And they're stealing gold, they are laughing. I do it every day, negative money in Euro. With that, what is that the three thousand square kilometers? So Nigeria State is two and a half times Netherlands. And all Nigeria State, there's also three allocation, it's about sixty billion Naira a year after the notion of their death. Then the land in their sport in two thousand and twenty-one agricultural export was hundred and thirty billion euros, one over eighty billion dollars. A state with two and a half times their size did not share itself, talk less of export. So even Nigeria State, when they do to share themselves, I do only five percent of what Netherlands did. They will have sixty billion dollars. A six of that sixty, Naira per dollar is ten point nine trillion, which is eighty times what they will get from sharing, what they are wanting to share. Borneo State is, it's not a godland. Borneo State is seventy point nine thousand square kilometers of land. In fact, what we have given us, Borneo State, they tell you, we are having a problem in Borneo State. Sanbissa area is sixty thousand square kilometers, which is three times the size of Israel. Israel is twenty-two thousand, it's two point one, even multiplied by three, sixty-six, they are sixty. It's just ten percent plus or minus. Look at what Israel is doing. Look at what Admisa giving us, providing some of our work. That is what we want for this matter. And make it work. Number three state, which I will have later, is Daraba. Daraba is fifty-four point four thousand square kilometers of land, which by beautiful for the hunger. Daraba is bigger and Belgium and Israel combined. Belgium is thirty point nine thousand square kilometers, Israel is two point one, two thousand three. Daraba is forty-four point four. And we cannot they can't share themselves. We can continue flower in Daraba. Kenya export of flower over half billion dollars last in two thousand and twenty-one. We can continue coffee in Daraba. A twenty each, one point one billion dollars in coffee export. So what is happening here? That's what we want to check. You want to start producing, you want to start working. And you can help. I know people who come here to tell this story. Yes, we say that this professor God bless you come here, he not come here, he never watch you there. What do they come here to do? They come to bless you, to do this, to do that, ask them where they're coming from. What did they do in the past? Let's try and verify where the past is. We don't want to, we don't want to perform the South Africa. We want them to tell us where they're coming from. It is important. What we are here, I am not here, I'm saying we fight corruption. This is only a assembly member who refuse to buy house when they show houses to national assembly member. He has no need of corruption. You have seen, everybody can pay you about me, you're not telling anybody. Go and show them where Kalanplastate money is missing. And I'll stop running. All they are saying about me is that I'm stinky. The only that share the only that share it, their money they stole it. It is all their money. Our children were at school. We are thrown for eight months. The position is in care. We're talking about their education. Nobody would have allowed our children in any part of the world to be here to school for eight months. Because you see, everything about South Africa is their education. Nigerian S R E schooling pay is nine percent. The global average is that eight percent. And we allow them to be a month for eight months. And the reason why they are coming for eight months is because Father Bernard of Nigeria have refused to honor an agreement to give them one point, eight trillion, which President Jonathan graciously get them two hundred billion before leaving office. And in six years, Nigeria could not give them additional one hundred. What a country. That country is a country where they will steal or waste in a month. Enough money to pay that. My leaders in faith, we're the only country in the night, in the war, open. All you producing country, that's not producing our product, our product is stolen. Only people in government still own it. It's all that person. Nobody here can steal it. So you can steal oil. When I said it, people said, we have only university, one point one trillion. We are producing our product every month. In July, two thousand and twenty-two, Nigeria's output is one point eight billion barrels a day. Throughout the month of July, our production was one million eighty-three thousand. So every single day, we lost seven hundred seventeen thousand. Multiplied by that one days, it will give you twenty-two million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's what we get the world for. That's what we get the world for. The average price of oil, the average price of oil, two hundred parts of July was hundred and ten dollars. If you multiply by two hundred and twenty, two, twenty two million, two hundred and twenty seven, it will give you two billion, four hundred forty five billion dollars. Which if you multiply by six hundred and fifty twenty dollars, you have one point four trillion naira. And you give it to them, one point one, a one trillion billion, which will complete Abuja to Karuna. That is one more stealing, one more. I shall have a country, we don't have a country. That's why they are telling me that we don't have structure, the destruction reality, we want to dismantle it. And you know, we want to destroy it. That's why we want to help us, we want these structures to go home and rest, so we can have a country. My leaders say, Nigeria in six years, spent budget of six years, six years education, because we talk about education. From two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty one, go and check our education budget, it's about three point six trillion. Our health education, because we talk about health, is about two point four trillion. Two of them combined is about six trillion. Our one year subsidy, this is sixty C F, our one year subsidy is six point seven trillion. Subsidies organized crime, I've said it every day. Nigeria is a country of about, between two hundred and two hundred and fifteen million, we are the same population as Pakistan. Pakistan is two hundred and fifteen million. Pakistan have more roads than Nigeria, but their daily oil consumption is below sixty percent of Nigeria. So we want to stop your growth, redeem the oil, give them water, give it to the globe Nigeria. My deputy, we have no, half of us have been waiting for us this morning. But I've shown you, our commitment to this is total, we are not leaving to waste anybody this time. When I came to the governor of Alabasta, I told him, I have nothing there to impress anybody, but to check the state. And everybody know that, we move the education on to assist to number one. We are going to do the right things. Can you imagine my, my heart felt, coming to Kofa Char today, hey? Ask the chairman, how do we have a safe country? When nineteen sixty, there was a relic of a chart. And in the year two, two, dude got done something, they don't grow. I feel scared that, when we're supposed to have ice in the rain. That shows a country that is completely collapsed. Very unfortunately, that is all we want to start the revolution. We don't have time, time is against us. Look at that youth, very talented, fully energetic, or know where to go. So they're telling you the criminality. It is the youth who refuse to invest in, that has come to be brought to us. So they are now, we still putting demand of poverty, they are now they don't know where investing will come from, so they're taking us at their meat. We need to sacrifice it, I assure you of our commitment. This job requires physical and mental energy. It is not retirement room. So let nobody come here, and start telling you, oh, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. If you say you're going to fight corruption, we want to look at where you passed and know what was remaining. Because we have listened to people say, nice watch, this country are telling you, there is no difference when you're hearing it. People are spoken like this, and then when they get into office, they start giving excuses. They start telling you what they saw when they get in. I am daddy, seeing everything now. We don't want to give excuses, we want to find solutions. It's not going to be easy, it's not going to be difficult. Because we have put ourselves in deep into trouble. Our country was owing about fifteen trillion in twenty fifteen. Our capital was two thousand five hundred and fifty, when your daughter was when they were there. Our capital was two thousand five hundred and fifty, and we are owing fifteen trillion by today. Our debt is over seventy five trillion. And our capital is down two thousand. So we've lost twenty percent of our, what we are worth then, and we borrowed four hundred times. People said to me every day, Peter, how are you going to manage? I said, well, when you have an accident, all you need is doctors that can stop bleeding. All I've done is love you to stop the bleeding, and start that thing. It's not going to be easy, people will be, we are not prophesying, we are going to change it overnight. But we want to do what? Tell them what drives the economy, the economy is like going to change. The only reason why people come to change, my father and my lord, is because there's hope of life after. There's hope, and there's a God watching them. And that hope is driving their faith. That's how countries are done, good leaders will find okay, which will make people have faith in their country. That's what we want to provide the children of this country. Where we are now, is not what we're doing. So I'll show you, my dear people, religious leaders, my dear fathers, people of South Africa. Know that we've come today to tell you, we want to stop this destruction of Nigeria. We want to stop the abuse of Nigeria, because he's going to continue to take his revenge on us. And we'll take a worse revenge on our children. Hold us responsible, any Nigeria is possible, thank you and God bless.